Good evening and welcome to First Responder Night in Skokie, Illinois. It's Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. The Village Board meeting will come to order and we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by our Village Clerk, Promod Shaw.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If the Clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Roberts?
Here.
Trustee Sutker?
Here.
Trustee Ulrich?
Here.
Trustee Bromberg?
Here.
Trustee Klein?
Here.
Trustee Greg Killer is absent today. Mayor Van Dusen?
Here. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda for this evening. Trustee Klein, seconded by Trustee Ulrich. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to have removed? There are actually only two things this evening. If not, I'll call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen?
Aye. The motion passes. We're awaiting our Commissioner Bruce Rotner. So I'm going to flip the agenda.
I was just coming in. Okay. Earl can do it. Is Bruce coming? No wonder. The door opened. Here he comes. He's coming right in.
The man knows how to make an entrance. Next item on the agenda is the swearing-in of four new firefighters. First, let me introduce our Chief, Jeff Hoflick. Chief, welcome. I see standing next to our Chief is Kathy Fragala, Deputy Chief. Welcome. And inasmuch as this is a first responder night, I also want to introduce our Police Chief, Tony Scarpelli. Bruce, if you do the honors.
Yes, first of all, may I apologize. We were interviewing sergeant's candidates and it was a very ambitious schedule we had, so I apologize for being a little bit late. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'd like to take just a moment to thank Mayor Van Dusen and the Village Board members for allowing me the honor of representing the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioner and our Chairman, Will Evans. I'd also like to thank the families and friends of our new firefighters who are here with us this evening. I'd like to thank you for sharing your family members with the Village of Skokie. It's your support tonight and throughout your new firefighter's career that will have an extraordinary impact on their future success. They are joining the men and women of a nationally-recognized and accredited fire department under the outstanding leadership of Fire Chief Jeff Hoflick, and I'm glad I can say that. And last time I was up here, I was getting looks from the board, so I cut it in half, okay? So I'll just end my brief comments by two short quotes. I'm a quote guy. "When a person becomes a firefighter, their greatest act of bravery has been accomplished. What they do after that is all in the line of work." And finally, "true heroism is remarkably sober and very undramatic. It is not the urge to surpass all others at whatever cost, but the urge to serve all others at whatever cost." And that was actually said by the great tennis player, Arthur Ashe. So with that, we will start the swearing-in. Let me just make sure because if the paperwork isn't done, I get yelled at. Okidoko. Okay, I first call up firefighter Jennifer Corso. Jennifer? Come on, don't be afraid. Come on, stand there. Congratulations. Okay, Jennifer, if you'd raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Jennifer Corso.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America. And you can read that right there, Jennifer.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The state of Illinois?
The state of Illinois.
The ordinances of the Village of Skokie?
The ordinances of the Village of Skokie.
And the rules and regulations?
And the rules and regulations.
Of the fire department?
Of the fire department.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commission?
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commission.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability?
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay, before you leave, you're gonna get that and you're gonna sign this, but you're gonna give it back to me, okay? Yeah, just leave it. Great, thank you so much. Congratulations.
And Jennifer, would you introduce your family and friends to us who are with you this evening?
Sure. I have my daughter, Quinn, and my mom, Rochelle, my husband, David.
Welcome.
Sissy, Bob, my father, Chris, my brother, Chris, and my brother, Mark, and my uncle, Doug.
Terrific, thank you. Connor Maloney, come on up here.
How we doing, Connor? Congratulations. Okay, you're gonna repeat after me, okay? Okay, raise your right hand, please. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Connor Maloney.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America?
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The state of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
The ordinances of the Village of Skokie?
The ordinances of the Village of Skokie.
And the rules and regulations?
And the rules and regulations.
Of the fire department?
Of the fire department.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commission?
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commission.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability?
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay, hang on there. You take this home and then just sign this. Thanks.
And be sure to get Bruce's pen back.
Sir?
I was just reminding, Conrad, you want your pen back.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thanks, sir.
Connor?
Connor. One more thing, would you introduce your family and friends to us?
Yes, I will. First off, I have my beautiful girlfriend, Samantha Varga.
Welcome.
My mother, Carmel, the matriarch, my grandmother, my sister Tara, my brother Patrick, my dad, Patrick, my uncle Tom, my aunt Irene, and my uncle Doug.
Identify where you're from.
Capewellia, Chief Chicago Fire Department, brother Tom as well.
With Chicago. Welcome. It's a pleasure to have you.
I was with the Chicago Police Department for 40 years. They're very Chicago-friendly here, so it's all good. Okay, can we have Nicholas Chisholm up here? Nick, did I pronounce that right?
You did.
Absolutely. Good answer. Okay, Nick, I'm gonna read that. You raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Nicholas Chisholm.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America?
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America?
The state of Illinois?
The state of Illinois.
The ordinances of the Village of Skokie?
The ordinances of the Villages of Skokie.
And the rules and regulations?
The rules and regulations.
Of the fire department?
Of the fire department.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commission?
And the Skokie Fire Department Police Commission.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a firefighter for the best of my ability?
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. This is for you. And Nick, we're just gonna sign and date this and give it back. Okay, thank you. Good luck to you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nicholas, you have one, this is your first duty. You have to introduce your family and friends to us, please.
I have today here with me my dad, Scott, my stepmom, Ellen. Also friends, I have John in the back here, I have Mike in back, Conrad, and then John's wife in the front here, and his daughter.
And are you both with Chicago Fire Department?
No, I'm a firefighter departmentic of the Village of Skokie.
Oh, welcome.
I'm a firefighter departmentic of the Village of Skokie.
Oh, terrific. Welcome. Thank you.
Nicholas, where's?
I'm Muslim.
Did you give me back that form?
I did.
You did? Okay. We're all good.
Just testing you.
It's your first test, okay? You should be a lieutenant soon. Okay, finally, Robert Higgins. Okay, Robert, if you raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Robert Higgins.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America?
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America?
The state of Illinois?
The state of Illinois.
The ordinances of the Village of Skokie?
The ordinances of the Villages of, Village of Skokie.
And the rules and regulations?
And the rules and regulations.
Of the fire department?
Of the fire department.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commission?
And the Skokie Board of Police and, Fire and Police Commission.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability?
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability.
Good job. Congratulations. Okay, hang on, son. This is for you. And we need you to sign this and give it back. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Robert? Robert? No, 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 no.
Listen to this guy.
Back toward the microphone. You need to introduce your family and friends.
This is my dad, Bob, my mom, Diane, my wife, Karen, my mother-in-law, Linda, and my father-in-law, Tom.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of our new firefighters. We're immensely proud of our fire department. We proudly say that it is, and I see some competitors in the audience, that we're the best in the country. And I'll leave it to Jeff and Kathy to explain exactly why. But this community supports our police and fire. Every three years, we do a completely independent survey of our residents, and we ask them to give us suggestions on how we can do our job better, and we ask them to rate our police, our fire, our public works, all of our departments. And every time we have done this, and we're in around our 20th year now doing the survey, our fire department and our police department both come in in the 90th percentile of approval of our residents. Part of it is the professional leadership that Commissioner Rotner has pointed out this evening. It's also the experience on a day-to-day basis of our residents. Today, for example, we had a fire, and our professional fire department attended to it, they ran to the danger, and they took care of the situation. And our community is proud of the fact that they do that. We also say proudly that we are only one of about five or six municipalities in the entire country that has a police department, a fire department, and a public works department that is all fully accredited. In addition, our fire department has the rare distinction of an ISO-1 rating. But what really is important are the men and women who make up the department, and they make us all proud every single day. A large part of it comes about from the fact that we have a great Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. And I would, obviously, Commissioner Rotner, would the rest of the board just stand up for a second so we can all recognize you? Wait. We have one Commissioner who is standing. She's standing in the back wave. But they put in a lot of time and effort, hours and hours deliberating, and the fruit of that isn't publicity for themselves or notoriety, but it's the fact that we have such a great department. And normally, we would take a break at this time, but we're gonna ask everybody to hold on for just one second while I introduce Ann Tennis, who is going to make a presentation. I wasn't being completely facetious when I said this is first responder night in Skokie. We've just celebrated our fire department, and now, Ann?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm very, very pleased and proud to stand here tonight and advise that the Village of Skokie recently received a Voice of the People Award for Transformation and Safety from both the International City County Management Association in Washington, DC, and the National Research Center in Boulder, Colorado. And this award is being given to Skokie based on how our residents responded to the village's 2018 National Citizen Survey. We've conducted citizen surveys on a triennial basis since 2003. The Voice of the People Awards are given annually to communities that have conducted the citizen survey in that year with the highest or most improved ratings as voiced by their own residents. The National Research Center said this about Skokie, that we demonstrated a commitment to best practices in moving our community forward, and further, that the Village of Skokie showed excellence in listening and acting for the community's benefit, as evidenced by Skokie residents reporting, and I'm quoting now, "the highest levels of improvement in this category of public safety as compared with all other participating jurisdictions." The percentage of positive ratings that Skokie residents gave to their overall feeling of safety in our community rose by 6% between the 2015 and the 2018 citizen surveys. In addition, the percentage of positive ratings, meaning excellent or good, for all public safety indicators in the 2018 survey, they all showed increases from those given in 2015. The largest gain was evidenced in crime prevention, which had a 12% increase in excellent-good ratings. When compared to 344 communities across the nation that also surveyed their residents in 2018, the vast majority of Skokie's 2018 safety ratings fell well above national benchmarks. There are a number of reasons why the Village of Skokie received this award. Certainly, our police department and our fire department lead the charge with creating an atmosphere of safety in our community. But since summer 2015, the village has significantly increased community policing outreach through a number of initiatives, including the Many Cultures, One Community, Keeping Skokie Safe program that routinely brings the Community Outreach Police Substation, which we fondly call the COPS vehicle, into Skokie neighborhoods and parks each summer. When the COPS vehicle is out, Skokie police officers, and sometimes they're joined by our firefighters, who engage with residents in a friendly manner. They distribute crime prevention literature, hand out cookies and candy, and answer questions. Numerous other village departments and community partners, and even village commissions, assisted with this effort. For example, the Health and Human Services Department staff routinely came to COPS vehicle neighborhood visits, and they facilitated involvement by representatives of Asian Human Services and other community health organizations who reached, who conducted their own outreach to residents during those neighborhood visits. The Human Relations Commission partnered with School District 69's Parent Plus Group to organize the first-ever block parties in several of our multifamily neighborhoods, and these were held in conjunction with COPS vehicle visits. Staff from the Skokie Public Library also would, from time to time, join police officers to provide storytimes in children's activities, and our good partner, the Skokie Park District, routinely coordinate several free hot dog cookouts in parks during the summer when our COPS vehicle is present. Also, the Beautification Commission beautified parks in these neighborhoods where the COPS vehicle would visit. Importantly, these efforts were complemented by increased attention to neighborhood aesthetics by the Public Works Department and Property Standards Division of the Community Development Department, and these efforts were held in conjunction with the Neighborhood Integrity Ordinance. Several years ago, as part of that effort, additional streetlights were installed in several neighborhoods as part of the initiatives. In conclusion, numerous other programs contributed to increased perception of public safety, including expansion of the National Night Out Community Celebration, increased promotion of our Neighborhood Watch program, increased promotion of block parties on a community-wide basis, and visits by firefighters and police officers to many of these neighborhood gatherings. Skokie police officers, friendly participation in community charitable events at numerous local restaurants, our firefighters do that as well. The chat with the Chief Initiative at Wednesday's On the Green. Who can resist Chief Scarpelli's smiling face? The friendly presence of police officers and our firefighters and the COPS vehicle at the Skokie Festival of Cultures, the Skokie's Backlot Bash, and other community events. The COPS with Kids Initiatives, and the Fall 2016 spaghetti dinners at our, at all three of our fire stations, and those were followed by community spaghetti dinner at our Public Works Department in spring 2018. So the Transformation and Safety Award is truly a testament to the village's multidisciplinary, all-in approach to public safety and community outreach. So I'm very proud to present this award. I would invite Mayor Van Dusen, Village Manager Lockery, and Chief Scarpelli to come forward.
And I'd like to invite Chief Hoflick?
Yep.
And Will? Would Will, representing the Board of Fire and Police Commission, join us?
I'd like to ask you gentlemen just to orient yourselves towards your, just kind of get by the frame. Yeah, John, swing out, Mayor, swing out. We're gonna take two more. Thank you.
John? Nice try.
I know everybody is dying to hear the managers report, but I have a suspicion everybody would like to congratulate our new firefighters. So let's take a five-minute break and then we'll resume. Thank you. The meeting will resume. The next item on our agenda this evening is the report of our village manager, John Lockerbie.
Thank you, Mayor Van Duzen and Village Trustees. Good evening, everyone. Item A on my report this evening is a resolution to endorse the Early Childhood Alliance. And this evening, I've asked Beth Lindley, our Director of Human Services, to orient us to this program, and very worthwhile endeavor. And just in summary, as she's getting started, you know, the involvement of the Village of Skokie in a systematic wide focus on early childhood demonstrates the commitment of Skokie leadership to support families and the healthy development of children from birth into childhood. And with that, Beth, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, John, Mayor and Trustees. Thank you. It is my privilege to share with you a little tonight about the important work of the Early Childhood Alliance. Motivated by the recognition that children's early learning and care was lacking in coordination with the very schools for which they were preparing, the beginnings of an Early Childhood Alliance first came together in 2016. School districts responsible for K-12 learning of their students noted they were operating distinctly from the institution serving families with children zero to five. Of course, they were doing their jobs as independent entities, but available resources were often missed by the households most in need. Some children reached kindergarten without access to an early intervention program, for example, which would have been available with improved coordination. The ECA is a group of stakeholders, including area public schools, local private early childhood providers, nonprofit organizations, the Skokie and Morton Grove Libraries, Skokie Park District, and Health and Human Services staff. Over the past several years, this core group has engaged in purposeful expansion. A smaller pilot team has met regularly during the last year to establish a governance structure that will support and promote the operations of the alliance. I would like to take a moment to recognize a few of the folks that have been a part of this work group effort. We have Subia Javed, Liza Sullivan, Francesca Piladi, Joanna Varda, and Holly Jin, also Debbie Wedeman, Dr. Kennard, and Susan Reisberg of the Skokie Health Department. Would all of you please stand and be recognized? Here is the vision of the ECA. All children and their caregivers have healthy relationships, safe environments, and high-quality learning experiences in order to reach their full potential. The mission: to advocate for and coordinate comprehensive, community-based supports for young children and their caregivers that promote equity and honor strengths and diversity. As of January, 31 organizations have endorsed the charter as a commitment to their membership and development of future early childhood supports in the community. Skokie's involvement in a system-wide focus on early childhood demonstrates the commitment of Skokie's leadership to support families and the healthy development of children from birth into adulthood. Our involvement in the ECA will ensure that we are present and aware of the collaborative and collective efforts impacting Skokie families and young children. There is a return on investment when early childhood learning is a priority. I'd also like to mention that the ECA will host their inaugural public event on Tuesday, January 28, next Tuesday, at 6:00 p.m. at the Skokie Public Library, with a screening of the documentary No Small Matter. So if you missed the opportunity to see it last November, we're really excited to show it again next Tuesday. Following the film, there will be a mini-opportunity fair where attendees can take concrete action steps towards access to quality early childhood learning and care in our community. We hope you will join us and help spread the word about this exciting opportunity to screen this film in Skokie. Thank you for the opportunity to shine a spotlight on early childhood.
Thank you. If you have not seen No Small Matter, I would recommend it. In fact, Beth and I saw it together. It's a wonderful education for all of us, and it certainly reminds us of the critical importance of early childhood education. A resolution is in your briefing materials, a resolution endorsing the Early Childhood I think all the members of the board would join me in a motion and a second. I'll leave it up to the clerk to figure out who is who. A motion endorsing the Early Childhood Alliance and authorizing the Village of Skokie to become a founding member is in order, and if the clerk would just call the roll.
Sure. Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sadkar?
Absolutely, aye.
Trustee Ulrich?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Wenders?
Aye. The motion passes. Congratulations and thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it. Beth, thank you.
And that completes my report this evening.
Thank you. Beth is one of the hardest and yet quietest workers I've ever known, so Beth, thank you for everything you do. Next item on the agenda is report of our Corporation Counsel, Michael Lorch.
Thank you, Mayor, Trustees. Good evening, everyone. Items A and B on my agenda for tonight were adopted at the beginning of this meeting as part of the consent agenda, and therefore, that would conclude my report for tonight.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is report of our Plan Commission, case 2019-44P. Chairman Paul Luke with Matt Brandmeyer. Welcome, Matt.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. I have one case tonight, case 2019-44P, a special use permit at 8027 Lawndale Avenue. At the December meeting, at the December 19 meeting of the Plan Commission, we reviewed the request of Chicago Land and Trust Company under title trust for a special use permit for an automotive repair facility at 8027 Lawndale Avenue in an M2 light industry district. Fix Auto Skokie, Nick and Ernie's, intends to expand its auto body repair business from its current location at 8015 Lawndale Avenue into the adjacent property to the north. The building will house administrative offices, an area for parts storage, and a garage containing six lifts and six parking spaces. No painting of vehicles will be taken, will take place in the building. The painting portion of the repair work will continue to occur at the 8015 Lawndale Avenue building. The existing loading dock at the building on the north side will be filled in to match the grade of the adjacent pavement to accommodate a parallel parking space, and a total of 15 parking spaces will be provided outside. The loading dock overhead door will be removed, and the space will be filled in with brick to match the building's facade. The existing guardrail on the east side of the property will be removed, and the driveway will be converted to a one-way eastbound to across to the alley. Landscaping islands will be installed at the east and west sides of the roll, of the roll of parking spaces in the north side of the property, as well as along the portion of the north side of the building where the loading dock presently exists. A bicycle rack will be placed within the walkway to the west of the front entrance to the building. The Plan Commission concurs with staff's recommendation to grant a special use permit.
A motion on Plan Commission case 2019-44P, special use permit for 8027 Lawndale, is in order. Trustee Ulrich, seconded by Trustee Bromberg. Are there any comments or questions? If not, I'll call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sadkar?
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Wenders?
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you.
That concludes my report.
The concluding item this evening are citizen comments.
Congratulations.
Is there anybody who wishes to address the board in this vast audience? I would like for the television audience to remind everybody that this weekend, on Sunday, the Coming Together inaugural ceremony, at 1:00 p.m. there is a community reception, and at 2:00, there is a program. It's entitled, this year, Journeys to Niles Township. It will be held at Niles West High School, and we would invite everybody's participation. I believe it's Trustee Roberts honors this evening.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.